At this time, I will call the meeting of the Marshall City Council to order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The opening item.
Welcome, everyone here this evening. You're getting a little ahead of yourself.
Okay. Overachiever, Bob.
Yep. The first item on the agenda, I am going to pass the gavel to President Pro Tim Craig Schaefer, simply because it's a little bit awkward for me to do this and Craig was yours. And then after that, then I'll.
Then you want it back? Well, I'll take my moment in this on. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have the distinct privilege tonight of introducing Luke Fisher, the Executive Director for the League of Minnesota Cities and a contingent from the League. And we'll start out first with a short video, but Mr. Mayor, Bob Burns has been, has received a very prestigious C.C. Ludwig Award from the League of Minnesota Cities, and so this celebration will follow.
Is your audio going out to make sure you're live?
Oh, don't forget that.
Back in the old days, when I was a kid, we'd get that tuner screen. Stay tuned, we're having technical difficulties. We'll be right back. No pressure, Stephen.
Congratulations, Mayor, on all your accomplishments and the story that you're going to be seeing. One of the joys of the night on I'm at the House.
Are you sure?
Sure.
We've worked through some challenging times in emergency management and make, and some difficult law enforcement related issues. Your calmness and your reasonable thinking has really made my job so much easier. Appreciate you, and I'm grateful for your leadership.
Congratulations on receiving the C.C. Ludwig Award, Mayor Burns. It's been a pleasure to work with you for the past 18 years. You have a vision for Marshall that continues to evolve over time and makes us stronger every year. It's because of your leadership and your ability to navigate tough issues with city staff, council, and residents, that we have a workplace that employees are proud to be a part of, and a community that our residents are proud of. Congratulations, and thank you for your leadership.
Congratulations on your well-deserved award. Your dedication is very admirable for what you've done for the city and the region.
Congratulations, Mayor Burns, on being recognized for the C.C. Ludwig Award. The leadership you provide for the city Marshall staff and community is incomparable. You're a steady and calming presence in every room that you enter. In addition, I've always admired your tireless advocacy for not only Marshall, but the entire southwest Minnesota region. So I just think this award is well-deserved. So congratulations.
Congratulations, Mayor Burns, on your award. The C.C. Ludwig Award is truly a reflection of your dedication to Marshall and the surrounding region. So congratulations again, and I just want to thank you for your many, many years of service. Thanks.
Well, Bob, congratulations. I just want to thank you for all your solid leadership with the community. The city is so fortunate to have your experience and intelligent. And on the pillar for the community, I appreciate your wisdom on our finance and all the projects, and the fact that you empower staff, council, and the community to come up with ideas and to follow through and have all the great projects and just the good leadership in Marshall. So thank you, and hey, ready to help you campaign for your next term. Thanks, Bob.
Fisher.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name's Luke Fisher, and I'm Executive Director at the League of Minnesota Cities. I'm joined tonight by a couple of friends, one of which is going to come up here in a couple of minutes and share just a little bit more about the award that we offered. But I'm joined by Wendy Berry. She's the League's second Vice President and a West St. Paul City Council member. Dan Greenswig, our Insurance Trust Administrator, and Jen Wolfe, our Deputy Insurance Trust Administrator. When we give out an award, I think it's important sometimes to think about the context of who we are as an organization, so you know why this award is important or why it's special and why we're so excited to be here. As an association, the League of Minnesota Cities represents 836 of the state's 855 cities. The 20 or so that aren't our members, you probably wouldn't know. They're really small and disorganized. Our largest member is the city of Minneapolis with a population of 425,000 people, and our smallest member is the city of Berry. You can't guess this, Mayor, but any guesses on Berry's population?
Eighty-seven.
It's a little bit lower than that.
Seventeen.
You're really close. It's about 19 people. Nineteen people. So we, as an association, get to interact with Minneapolis, Marshall, and Berry and all points in between, and that's something that we take pretty seriously, and we get a lot of good energy from, because there are a lot of good city officials across the state that are doing really important work, like you are. City officials call us when they have a question, when they've got something that they can't quite solve. They call us when they want to develop as a leader through our training and conferences. They call us when they want to advocate at the Capitol and be more active in St. Paul. They call us when there's an insurance issue and we can help and we can provide some coverage. But one of the things that I think we get to do that is, one of the most fun parts of my job is to amplify good city stories and amplify the good work city officials do across our state. With all the contacts that we have with our members, we get to know the best, and tonight we get to recognize the very best. Mayor Bob, you've got to know that you've got the support of every city in our state and our Board of Directors and all of our staff for the hard work that you've done and the dedication that you've given to Marshall. And tonight Wendy Berry is going to come up and talk a little bit about the award and why you're earning this recognition from the League. So I'm going to turn it over to Wendy right now.
Thanks, Luke. Thanks for having us. I'm very pleased to be here this evening to recognize Mayor Bob Burns, winner of the C.C. Ludwig Award for 2023. The award was first presented to Mayor Burns early this summer at the League of Minnesota Cities Annual Conference in Duluth, and I think was taken directly to your cabin home, if what I'm hearing is correct, which is perfect. The C.C. Ludwig Award is the League's highest honor for elected officials. Recipients are chosen for their vision, statementship, and unwavering commitment to the public good. The award was established in 1962 and is named for Clarence C. Ludwig, who served as the League's Executive Director from 1935 to 1959. Minnesota is fortunate to serve as the home of many outstanding city officials who are dedicated to serving in local government. The League receives several strong nominations for the C.C. Ludwig Award each year, and few recipients are as deserving as Mayor Burns. He has served this community as a city council member or as a mayor since 1986. The mayor's nominators point to many projects and initiatives that have benefited by his leadership over the years. Examples include securing funding to make substantial investment in C.'s infrastructure for flood control following rate events that caused major flooding occurring early in his tenure, helping to form a partnership between the city-owned medical center and Avira Health to bring more physicians and services to the area, supporting the construction of the city's 9/11 memorial park, and spearheading the construction of a new Marshall Lion County Library, among many, many other achievements. And Mayor Burns' contributions to city government extend far beyond his own city. He has a respect and admiration among his counterparts throughout the state and is widely recognized for his advocacy of issues and policies that benefit the greater community of cities. Mayor Burns has served on the Board of Directors of the Southwest Regional Development Commission and has chaired the organization's revolving loan fund committee for many years. In that role, he has provided regional leadership promoting the growth of new and existing businesses. And notably, he has worked to help form the Southwest Minnesota Council of Mayors to advocate for higher education opportunities and workforce development in southwest Minnesota. His nominators note that Mayor Burns is an intuitive and practiced problem solver. He sees problems as opportunities and gets teams together to create solutions for the city of Marshall. Another notes that his greatest asset is his communication skills, calm, informative, and reassuring, and that Mayor Burns is an ardent supporter of city staff who encourages personal development. I can attest to the fact that the mayor is a frequent attendee at League events, including several annual conferences. Through his participation, he freely contributes to the personal development of others through his sharing of wisdom and experiences. Mayor Burns, on behalf of the League of Minnesota Cities, we congratulate you for your 2023 C.C. Ludwig Award.
Well, thank you. Craig, I get the gavel back, Craig.
Yeah, go ahead. I guess I, yeah, thank you for letting me borrow it.
I don't know if you're going to say something, but we want to get a picture with you, your council here tonight before you.
Okay. Well, I'll be, I'll be very brief. Okay. The thank you to the staff, thank you to the League, thank you to the council. I've always said this is really a great council, so. Luke, you're fairly new in your position, probably about a year?
Four months.
Okay, so.
Well, it's about long for a lot of people.
So, the League of Minnesota Cities, Luke has been with the League for a number of years, but was recently named the Executive Director. There hasn't been very many executive directors of the League, so it's really quite an honor. So, and thank you so much for the League's leadership. Thank you to the board. Thank you to the Insurance Trust representatives that are here tonight. So I am kind of known for not giving a long speech, so I'm going to end it there, and maybe we'll take a quick break so that you can take your photo, and then we'll continue with the remainder of the agenda. Okay?
Perfect. Just one other point before we break, though, too. Our board is, has a great representative from Marshall. Sharon Hanson is one of our board members, and I neglected to mention that. I got excited talking about you, Bob. But Sharon has been a tremendous board member already and contributed.
Great. Very good.
All right. Picture.
Okay. Picture.
We may get, like, the whole council to come right here, up front, over.
Sure.
I was going to put shorts and let my fly.
We're missing. Yeah. I don't know if this is in the way or not.
Do you want to come in a little bit so we can not get that?
Okay.
Or just go by Dan.
Oh, boy. Dan, there are so many better people to stand by.
And Scrooge in just a little bit.
You gotta get in here.
Oh, I see. I'm not uncomfortable. Okay, Scrooge in. Okay, ready? One, two, three, cheese. Cheese and one more. Okay. So, okay, if I grab one?
Absolutely.
Ready? One, two, three. All right, thanks.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
You officially have the gavel back, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so now we'll get back on track here with the regular agenda. We do have an agenda before us. Are there any changes to that agenda? If not, we'll operate under that agenda. The first item then would be Agenda Item Number Three, which would be the Award of Bids for Snow Removal at Tallgrass Liquor and the Merit Center for 2023, 2024, and for the following.
We have to approve minutes.
Oh, I'll take.
Sorry.
I got way ahead of myself, thank you.
That's okay.
Gavel up for you.
We'll start with Agenda Item Number Two. That is to approve the minutes from the last regular council meeting that was held on September 26th. The council does have the minutes. Are there any corrections?
I'd make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'd second that.
Motion by Amanda, seconded by Steve to approve the minutes as they have been presented. We'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. Now we'll move to the Award of Bids, Agenda Item Number Three, the Snow Removal Services at Tallgrass Liquor and the Merit Center for 23, 24, and for 24, 25 winter season. Jason, do you have this?
Yeah, I can, I can present it.
Or does, who has this?
I can do it.
Okay, go ahead.
Yep. So every, every two years, we solicit proposals for snow removal at the Merit Center and at Tallgrass Liquor, so our office just kind of helps do that, run that process of proposals. On October 5th, we did, received proposals. We received only one this time around from Action Company LLC of Marshall. This is the same company that removes snow over the prior two-year term, and the price has remained unchanged at $175 per occurrence at Tallgrass and $450 per occurrence at Merit. Staff would recommend to enter into an agreement with Action Company LLC for snow removal services.
Are there any questions? If not, you have the recommendation. Is there a motion?
I move approval.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by C. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. Move then to the Consent Agenda. We'll bring the items on the Consent Agenda up on the screen, and they include consider removing the special assessments from the city financial statements, consider the transferring of funds and closing the Capital Project Fund, consider the approval of National Highway Safety Grant Agreement, consider the quote for auditing services for year ends for 2023 and 2024, consider the approval of the 2023-2024 Equipment Breakdown Insurance Coverage, consider the approval of temporary on-sale liquor license for Marshall Air Chamber of Commerce, consider the approval of off-sale 3.2% malt liquor license for Tapachia Grocery Store, consider the approval of the written notice of the intent to terminate the land use services contract effective December 31st, 2023, and finally, consider the approval of the bills and the contract payments. Is there any item on the Consent Agenda any member of the council wants removed for separate discussion?
Move to approve as written. Second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion passes. We'll move then to Agenda Item Number 13. Agenda Item Number 13 is a Batuminous Overlay on various city streets. We have a change order to consider the final change order and the acknowledgement of the final pay request, which actually is a reduction in the, from what the original contracted amount was. So with that, Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. So this is our annual mill and overlay project. We milled and overlaid numerous city streets that are listed in the table in your memo. In addition to that, we did some mill and overlay work at various wastewater facilities. This one's a little odd when you look at the final change order resulting in a decrease of $124,881. The reason that that is so high is that we eliminated a couple streets out of the project right off the bat, at the front end with our contractor, with their cooperation, to get us on track with what our budgeted amount was. In addition, we did a change order to remove some of the ADM truck stacking lane area out on North Seventh Street. We removed that from the contract, and that was billed directly to ADM by the contractor. So there's just a few adjustments that occurred, but bottom line, project was below estimate and on budget and on time, and we thought it went very well. And we would recommend to approve the final reconciling change order and make the final payment.
Okay, thank you, Jason. Any questions?
I move to approve the change order.
A second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Amanda. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion passes. Agenda Item Number 14 is the Airport Snow Removal Equipment Building, the federal grant pre-application. Once again, Jason Anderson, Director of Public Works, City Engineer.
Thank you, Mayor. With this particular item, we probably wouldn't have needed to bring it to council to do the pre-application. What this means, though, for your reference, is that we need to declare our intent to use federal funds next year on this project, so that's what we need to do, I think, within the next week. So we're bringing this forward as just sort of a kickoff for this project. You may remember, we went through the long process of dedicating funds, going through grant process, and then actually getting bids and determining that the bids were too high, we couldn't award the project. So we do need to move forward very soon here to re-bid the project. We expect a proposal from TKDA very soon for bidding services to re-bid it, and we'll bring that forward for council consideration. But I thought that this was a good opportunity to just bring this forward to the council as sort of a kickoff for the process that we're intending to start again. I included the schedule that you see on the screen in the packet there for the timeline, where we hope to be advertising for bids as early as December and opening bids in January. So we have a lot of work to do, and we will have to come back to council soon with a proposal from TKDA to, to help us get there. Other item worth noting is we do have a cost estimate included in the packet. It probably needs slight tweaking. It shows a local sponsor amount of $800,000. We think that that number will actually be closer to a million by the time we make adjustments. But that's right what we were talking about at the end of last year. One other detail in the fiscal impact area, the memo identified that it's likely that the city will have to carry all costs of the project, at least through the first part and most of next year. That's a result of federal grants likely not being available until the end of 2024 and state grants not being available until summer of 2024. So we've been working a lot with EJ and the finance team here at the city to determine how we would do that, but I just wanted to make the council aware that once we get moving on this and we get ready to solicit for bids, we will have to be prepared to carry the cost of the project until we can get the grants. So with that, that's my brief introduction to the project or reintroduction to the project. We'll be, we'll have to come forward again to talk. This isn't really making anything happen, per se, but just a nice kickoff and looking for authorization to submit the pre-grant application. Thanks.
Questions?
It was just, just a comment.
First.
For Commissioner. Yes. The Airport Commission discussed this pretty extensively at our meeting last week, and they're recommending or requesting that the council move forward, grant approval to move forward with this.
And Steve?
My only question is, we apply for a grant. I think that's great, because if we can get the money from the feds and the state, that's awesome. What happens if we don't? Because there's no guarantee we'll get the grant. I sure hope there is.
It's my understanding, and I'll reference TKDA is kind of our guide to this FAA and Min Jet Aeronautics process, but it's my understanding that as we work through this, and that's part of this pre-application, is that we're going to be getting some assurances that as long as the federal government can have a budget that is working next year, we will be able to use these federal funds. They are our federal grant funds. They're our AIP entitlement funds, and they're our bill funds, bipartisan infrastructure law funds. So they are ready for us to use. They are, this is an eligible expense. We will be able to get them, provided that the government is operating the FAA next year. So there's just some issues and delays with federal budget concerns right now, and that's what's going on at that level. And then the state is really good at matching grants when there's federal funds involved. So I think that we're, we'll be in a good place, and TKDA is our guide there.
Good question. Any other questions for Jason? If not, is there the authorization to submit the pre-application?
I move the authorization.
A second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by C. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion passes. Move then to Agenda Item Number 15, the Award of Proposal for Professional Services for the 2022 Active Transportation Infrastructure Project. Once again, Jason?
Thank you. So we've been awarded a $360,000, $360,381 Active Transportation Program Grant. This is to do numerous pedestrian improvements around our community, RRFB crossing at the bike trail at County Road Seven, along with a slight trail realignment, and RFB crossing at 59 and Main Street, and then a trail extension between Boyer and Windstar, parallel with 59, out in front of Aldi. So to help us get that project completed, we're proposing to enter an agreement with Bolton &amp; Mink to complete the design work on this project. This is a proposal in the amount not to exceed $48,000 for those services. All dollars that we'll expend will be either grant funds or municipal state aid system funds. So no local costs on this project beyond our state aid allocation, and we will work to advance those funds this, this winter.
Very good. Thank you, Jason, for your work on this. If not, is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Craig. If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. We'll move then to the next agenda item, the consideration of the development, of a development agreement for the sanitary sewer extension to serve Outlot B of the Morse Edition. Jason?
Thank you. City staff was approached by Dan Hiskin, owner of Hiskin Construction, regarding access to city sanitary sewer at his shop location at 200 South Eighth Street. There's a city public sewer available around 300 feet away from his shop, and he would like to extend the sewer to service his building. So upon reviewing that and discussing it, we've agreed to allow for that extension at Hiskin Construction's cost, and the city would take over that main as a public sanitary sewer facility upon successful construction. We have worked with our city attorney to draft this agreement that you have in the packet. The agreement outlines basic terms and identifies that they should follow a city design standard, and we would put that together, and there's some costs to be reimbursed for those services. So that's what we have before you in the packet, and staff is in support of this agreement.
Very good. Questions?
Jason, just one question. So are there lots between the manhole where the connect is and the, and the Morse property?
There are lots on the other side of the right-of-way, but no other lots that would be connected in between on that side. But there are lots on the other side.
What if there's a request to connect?
The way we're handling this and moving forward to, to move quickly for Mr. Hiskin is that there would be no assessments on this project. He would be paying for the cost of the extension. So at a future date, if somebody else wished to connect, they'd pay the normal connection fee that we have for sanitary sewer connections, no project assessments.
So he, and Mr. Hiskins wouldn't get compensated back for tying into that line?
That is not how.
Turned over to us?
That is not how we have it set up, because it would be turned over as public.
Sure, okay.
We did talk through that as an option. I advise that if he's in a hurry to get this done, if we want to move quickly, this is the way to go. If we want to do something different, then it probably takes more process.
Right, okay.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, what are the wishes of the council?
I move approval.
A second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Amanda. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion passes. Agenda Item Number 17, Consider the Farm Lease Proposals for Agricultural Land That the City Owns Within the City Limits. I'll call on EJ Moberg, Director of Administrative Services.
Thank you. All of our existing farm leases expire at the end of this year, so we started a process back, well, earlier this year, we actually started quite early this year, but it became public on August 24th through September 21st. We had a request for proposals available for the 12 different farm parcels that were owned, and abstract is within the packet. For those 12 parcels, we asked for the per-acre cost and the yearly cost, as well as the three-year period for those parcels. So the, the abstract is within the packet there, as now shown on the screen. For Parcels Two and Four, we are asking For Parcels 2 and 4, we are asking, we did give the existing renter the opportunity to match the high proposal. The city chose that option to save on costs of surveying and staking the properties, potential costs of an additional field approach, the irregular parcel whiffs, possible access issues, and previous experience with that existing farmer for those properties near the airport. Otherwise, everything is within the packet there. There are maps also included. As far as the fiscal impact for 2023, we collected just over $63,500. If these high proposals are accepted, for next year, we will have rental income of So recommendation from staff is to accept, accept the recommended proposals for the 12 farm lease parcels, with the update noted for Parcels 2 and 4, and authorize staff to finalize the applicable lease agreements effective January 1 of 2024 through December 31 of 2026. Are there any questions about?
You want to also add the, the other, and it's really in the agreements, but in the thing to point out is that the parcel that is adjacent to the wastewater treatment facility.
Steven, do you want to jump to Parcel 12?
So that, that needs to be in roll crop because that's what the wastewater department uses to knife in the sludge.
And the, the proposed high bidder was, it was discussed with wastewater personnel, and they did agree to allow us to, to do the normal fertilizing there, as we have done with our bio solid application that gets worked right in. So that will be a part of that lease for that particular parcel.
Questions for EJ? If not, thank you, EJ, for your, your work on this.
Yeah, just a comment back. I appreciate your work on that, and I appreciate the fact that we've got improved agreements, improved rates, so thank you for that.
Any other questions? If not, you have the recommendation?
I move approval.
A second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by C. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion passes. So we'll move then to Agenda Item Number 18. This item is use of the airport lot for temporary gravel storage as part of a pending future development. Sharon?
Sharon here.
And City Administrator.
Yes, the City of Marshall has actually been in discussions with this developer for probably about three years. In the last year, there's been more serious consideration of placement of a hangar on one of the available airport lots. This would be taking the bridge to the west Madrid Circle, and that would lead to some available lots. We have a draft development agreement, and we are very close to coming to terms with that. Our Airport Commission Member and City Councilmember Craig Schaefer has been in on some of these discussions as well. The request came in last week to ready the site, is could there be storage of gravel prior to the final lease agreement? Staff have consulted with each other, along with an airport consultant, and are agreeable to allowing gravel to be stored at the lot that will soon hopefully be developed. We do have a draft agreement in the council packet. This was drafted by Kennedy and Graven. We didn't, in the council packet, it does not, does not specify a fee charge. What our initial discussions from the city was that we would, we would forgive any fee if there is development, and if there wasn't development, we would either assume the gravel that was placed on the lot or have him pay a fee. So those are the final, finer detail that still needs to be worked out, but in essence, the agreement is, is what we're putting forth for council to approve, and we'll have the city attorney do the final review prior to any signatures being placed on the, on the storage of gravel. Hopefully soon, in a future council meeting, we will then also follow up with the lease agreement. And I don't know if Councilmember Schaefer or City Engineer Jason Anderson would like to add anything. This is just one piece of development that shows some progress and cooperation between the city and the developer.
Greg? Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Sharon. And it's, and this has been ongoing, but it, the proposal, without getting in any details before it's final, is, is attractive, and it's, it's very positive to have the development start on the Bridge to Opportunity and the Bridge to the Future. So we're trying to keep moving forward with this, but it, I think there's a lot of excitement with it. I know we've discussed it in very broad generalities at the Airport Commission also, and it's good to see that energy out there. And I think that there's possibly even a second one now, that's, that's thinking about doing some work out there, but not nearly at this stage of it. We're, we're really close, and we did spend a good bit of time yesterday kind of polishing out the agreement. So I, I think it's a, it's a good proposal. Like you said, if we can get it final, it'll come before council for, for final review and approval, but very positive for that part of the airport. So I think, I think it's a good thing. I think this is a good perk cooperative. The gravel's being generated by a development project in town, so it's good because it helps that move forward also, and it just brings more value to the community, which is, is revenue and also just encouragement that we are seeing all this positive work happen in our community.
Thank you, Greg. Questions for either Sharon or Craig? Steve?
Are there any restrictions by the FAA on storage of gravel in this area, or the pile height or anything like that?
We should be okay. I checked with John Peterson, our consultant from TKDA. No concerns were noted.
And the gravel pile won't exceed what the building dimensions would be by any stretch, so it would be approvable for a building. So the biggest thing is just make sure that we're compliant with the MS4 for storage of granular material.
Our airport supervisor has been in contact with the gravel operator and the developer on, on more specifics on size, amount, quantity, and so there's been good communication there as well.
Jason, anything you wanted to add? Any other questions? If not, I would entertain a motion for the allowance of the temporary gravel storage at the airport.
I'd move to approve.
Motion by Steve. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Amanda. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. Agenda Item Number 19, Commission Board Liaison Reports. Craig?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Airport Commission did meet last week. We've, well, about the only thing that we really talked about to any detail that we haven't already discussed this evening was a report from Dean on the crack ceiling that's happened. Now, there was a grant that we got to do that, and I think this is the third year. Jason, I think that's second.
Second.
Open for another year. And talking to Dean, the work that he's got left will pretty much use up that grant amount, but it's, my hat's off to, to our street department again and their cooperation with the work that they do out there. Because of the tools that we provide them and the ability of them to do crack sealing, we've gotten a lot of bang for the dollar with our staff and our equipment doing that work. So they continue to do great work taking care of our airport and the other infrastructure. But talking to the tenants and users of the airport that, that sit on that board, it's not negative at all. It's very positive. So there's a lot of good things happening out there, and I just appreciate the staff that we have and how dedicated they are, and it's a quiet dedication, but it's, it's very obvious when you get out there, the work that they do. So I just want to thank them for that, and that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Steve?
Mine did not meet.
Amanda?
Mine haven't met yet either.
Yeah, mine have not met. However, this Friday, the MINDOT District Aid Area Transportation Partnership meets. I represent the Regional Development Commission on that, on that board. C.
DEI met, and we did a recap on welcoming week event. We had, was it almost 500, a little over 500 or close to 500 attendees? And then we also talked about moving forward with Juneteenth, as the city will take over that celebration. And then the library, they kind of whittled their budget down to 3.9%, so the county seemed happy with that. I think we're still looking at a couple of things. And then policy renewal, they, they just have a guideline that every three years, they renew policies, and one of them was the smoking policy. And so they actually already had marijuana included in there, so it was just approved. That's all I have.
Very good. Move then to Councilmember Individual Item. C, let's start on your end. You looked at some down there.
Oh, I have nothing. I was like.
I don't have anything, Mr. Mayor.
Steve?
I have nothing.
Amanda?
I don't have anything.
So the only thing I would add is this Friday is the anniversary celebration at the Senior Center. I believe it starts with a luncheon about 11:30, and then there's a program at 1 o'clock. So it's been 35 years, so that's something to celebrate. So with that, we'll move on to staff reports. Sharon?
We had a really good community services advisory board last week, and we had a great discussion about cannabis consumption in parks and around our recreation areas. And we're thinking maybe we would have the board just give some perspective and maybe a recommendation to LNO, whether they want it or not. We may just have the board look at that, but it wasn't really, there wasn't a consensus, so we have to maybe come back. And, and so I thought it was a really good discussion by, by all the board members on that the county has an ordinance that bans public consumption in all public areas, which really covers the city except for enforcement. So you won't have a Lyon County Sheriff's Office or Deputy doing enforcement in our city jurisdiction on that ordinance. So if we were going to look at compliance, we would have to look at our own ordinance on that. I know that the LNO and the city council has talked about a cannabis work session, hopefully before the end of the year, and we wanted to pull LNO back together in October, and that's still our goal. I think we had picked a date, and Stephen will send that email out. So just wanted to give you some information on that. And then Councilmember Lewski mentioned the welcoming week really successful, and Southwest Initiative Foundation has been a really good supporter in the region, and they did award the city a grant of just over $2,700 to help fund, fund the activities that were there. And, and so it was, it was nice to get their support for it as well. So that's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Good. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of quick items. Just wanted to alert the council that next week, Monday, October 16th, MINDOT Aeronautics will be hosting a meeting in these chambers, one of five across the state, to present the 2022 State Aviation System Plan. So we'll be welcoming them here, which is good. Then a quick project update, the Pond Project and the Parkway Edition is pretty much complete. The trails and the seating is largely done. I think we're in a really good spot there. And the Third and Lyon Construction Project is getting very close. I think that next week, well, this week on Thursday, Lyon Street should be open between Third and Fourth, and the intersection of Fourth and Lyon will be open, understanding that next week, when they come to Stripe, there'll be some disruptions when they come to Stripe the street and do some planting. The block of Lyon between Fourth and Fifth should be open the following week, by midweek, we expect. So we're getting very close to, to being complete downtown, and that's, that's a good thing. Brief disruption tomorrow morning on Third Street by Main, where they'll have a closure in the early morning to put the upright monuments in place at the intersection over there. So should be a short disruption there, where they need to block traffic to get them set, and then they should be able to get out of the way as they finish their work. So very close to being complete.
The stoplight status, will that be replaced or up?
No, the stoplight at Third and Main will be as is. That was through communication with Downtown Group, so it'll operate.
Please don't bring that up.
It'll operate as a pet crossing, essentially. So it stays green all the time on Main unless it's activated by pedestrian, then it'll, it'll turn.
So there's no alteration will happen with the existing?
No further alteration.
Jason, I think there's one correction to that. If you're traveling west or north on Main Street, and there's a left turn off of the southbound, would trigger a stop on the, on the opposing. So headed north or west, there would be a stop for left turn.
I guess that may, yeah.
Yeah. That trigger stays the same. I think that's the only thing that would, that and a pedestrian would trip that light, and it would only trip at red going west or north.
Yeah. Generally, what you see, though, is the pedestrians are getting a really quick turnaround on the light because it's been green for so long. When they go up and press it, they get almost an instant change, which is good for the pedestrian.
Right.
Very good. Any other questions for Jason? Our city attorney is not present this evening. One of her counterparts is available online. I don't think you have anything to add, probably, right?
Good evening, Mayor. I do not have anything to add for this evening.
Very good. The council does have the remaining items on the agenda, including the administrative reports, the listing of our building permits, and the listing of the upcoming meetings. Is there anything else to come forward at this meeting? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Amanda, seconded by C, to adjourn. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. We are adjourned.